On just. Great, so it is seven oh two and I'll call the meeting of the Kent Conservation Commission to order. The first item on the agenda as always is to amend if necessary and then accept the agenda. Does anyone have any items to add to the agenda or any other amendments to make?
Just to note that Mike must have dropped off. I don't, he'll probably be back.
He's coming in right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, no amendments.
Well, I'll entertain a motion then to accept the agenda.
So moved.
Listen. Liddy, all in favor, please raise your hand and or say aye. And if any are opposed, raise your hand. And seeing none, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda. Is to accept the minutes from our special meeting of June fifteenth. Short set of minutes. I hope you've had a chance to look them over. Does anyone have any amendments to make to these minutes?
Motion to accept the minutes as written. They were great, Connie. Thank you. Short and simple.
And I'll entertain a second.
I wasn't there.
You can still second, but if somebody who was there would prefer then.
I'll second them.
Thank you, Wendy. All in favor, please raise your hand. And any opposed? And seeing none, that motion carries. Welcome Miranda to the meeting. Next item on the agenda is the Treasurer's Report. Thank you, Liddy, for sending around the report prior to the meeting. Do you want to make an oral report?
Not totally necessary, except to say that we still have. With what? No, no dates to go. One thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars and ninety one cents still to spend.
Well, we, we can't spend it anymore, right?
No, no.
It's, yeah, that was last.
Actually. Actually Barbara does keep the books open in July, so if we had something, we probably could, but no, no.
If they wanted to like.
Wanted to shift some some. The, the, the Energy Conference could probably use a little money. We're going to be producing brochures and things and we haven't yet applied for a Eversource grant. If there was any way you could set us.
We can't do that.
We do have the same budget though for next year and it's, it, in all likelihood, we will have some money to put towards that, Wendy. Just looking at what our budget is. Liddy, I have a, a small expense and I, I just had the receipt with me, but in any case, I need to send it to you, but it's. We found that when we did the program at the library that we needed to buy a hose with a shut off valve for them in order to bring water to where they were having us plant, so. I have the receipt from Ace Hardware and to ensure you get it.
Okay, terrific.
All right. Anything else to say about the budget?
So that would go to the past fiscal year because we did it then.
If the books are.
Try to get it made in time for that, yes.
As long as you get it over quick enough, yeah.
I think so.
Just had it while I was at the IGA.
Okay.
Know it's you, but I can't find it in my bag right now. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Liddy. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Miranda, you are technically a member of the public, although of course, an invited guest of us as well. Do you have any comment to make at this time?
Um, no, not at this time, not, not what we can cover with the later sustainable topic.
Great. Okay. Good, well, so we will move on and I did this agenda in a hurry. I'm not sure that we need to have a, a full discussion on the Kent P O C D. But just let's note that in the time since we met. You know, we did submit comments to the P and Z Subcommittee. And the P and Z Subcommittee and P and Z together had, had a meeting. I, where they went through what was in the draft P O C D. With, if I remember correctly, limited time to comment. But. Does anyone want to talk about anything that happened during that meeting or make any comment? Is there anything for us to discuss at this time related to the P O C D?
Yo, your, your voice cut out. We didn't hear what you said.
Um, I said, not in particular. And I, I made some personal comments too.
Sorry, just taking a few notes. All right, well, then if there is no further discussion on that, let's move on. This could end up being a shorter meeting. Which would be terrible.
Say that, you just jinxed it or something.
Probably.
Next item on the agenda is our work connected with native plants and the pollinator pathway. We have since our last regular meeting, had a program with the Kent Memorial Library. I, you know, Carol Franken's brainchild and I'm sure that I, you know, that she was excited to see the pictures. By the way. Carol did correspond with me. She's home. She's doing well. She couldn't make the meeting tonight, but she, you know, she, she's engaged and reading everything that we send out and says hello. So, Melissa, do you want to debrief the, the program at the library?
No, no, only just to say that. I think we all, or at least Connie, Miranda and I had. Hesitation about the, the timing of the program and being just right at the end of the school year and. And unfortunately, many kids were busy and there was a lot going on. And so Miranda brought her adorable children and we. Planted and we had fun with them and they colored and, but, you know. Not the greatest time to run a program, an organized program for school age children.
You guys don't fill this in with some chatter. There's going to be a lot of baseball on taking minutes.
We can go on to Wendy and solar educational.
Well, I know that I have notes to take on that, so. Yeah, I mean, I, I was there at the program. I, it was, it was still fun. I haven't been back to the library to check on the plants. I don't know if any of you have. We planted some. You know, we planted some along the side of the building, next to the, the lot where the book sale is, is held. I, and then we received some plants that were larger perennials that didn't seem to fit there. And Clark Gifford and I went back the next day, I think it was the next day, maybe a couple of days later. And replanted a garden that had become overgrown on the backside of the library. So, so they've got nice gardens full of native plants now. And I think we started something, so hopefully they will carry that on and maybe there's some more collaboration to be done in the future.
What would be a better time, Melissa?
You know. You know exactly what I'm talking about, Mike. Like, you just got out of school, like, the last thing you want to do is organize programming. Even the last week of school, like, you're so crazed on just getting through the school year. Um, you know, unfortunately, that's the growing season, so I, I'm not really. Going to guess or, you know, they wanted us to plant a vegetable garden and we wanted to plant native plants, so. The native plant thing probably could have happened anytime now, but their vegetables had to happen when the vegetables needed to get in the ground, so. It was a little bit of a different program, the, the two programs were, were meshed together and so.
In the past, when we've done it in conjunction with April break. It's been better and that's because, you know, it's, it's during a time that kids would normally be in school and the parents are looking for something to do with them. So, you know, whether it be for break or. Over the summer as part of the library's children's programming, that, you know, they do a reading program and they could have integrated it into one of their activities there. But somehow, you know, in between, when people were newly on break and not in connection with any other program, it just didn't. It didn't grab the attention that it needed.
It wasn't for lack of trying. We put it out in all of our normal channels. They put it out in all their normal channels. We all did. The, the best we could and, you know, it's fine.
Well, we all, we learned.
We knew that we couldn't do the same program in the spring break because you're not planting then. So, you know, we're a little limited by our zone.
But should it have been later to be the summer reading, maybe, but we can, we can check next year, see what happens.
Good, all right, moving along to the solar educational program and, and thanks again to Wendy for sending. Along her report earlier today, but Wendy, it sounds like there's a lot happening, which is really great, so I want to give you a chance to talk about it if you'd like to.
Well, everything that's, that can be said is really in that report. I'm sorry, I didn't send that along to you sooner. I had sent it to Carol and I. Thought she would forward it, but life got complicated and I ended up in the hospital and everything was a mess. But if you circulated that list, that's everything we know at the moment. Maria Horn will be the spokesperson. We have a lot of good people that are on this program. I think it's going to be contribute to Sustainable Connecticut in a couple of ways. We're going to have a. A Zoom meeting next Thursday, I think it is, at nine AM. And I hope some of the additional people who are on that list now will be able to tune in and hear Bernie Pelletier and his crew from Pace. Talk about what they're planning. They really, they're kind of starstruck. They, they kind of imagined that Kent might be the place to become an example and. Two other towns in the northwest corner, whether that actually happens, but we're, we're thinking not of just inviting local. Kent people, but opening it up to people in the area, anybody who's interested and specifically. I hope we'll get a group of students from each of the schools, the public high school and the prep schools, because we think. This is who the message is ultimately for. They're the ones who are going to really have to deal with what we're anticipating. So I think my memo probably tells everything else. That's valid at this point, anyway.
The date of it is what?
October fifteenth, which is a Saturday. We haven't quite fixed on the hour.
Oh.
Because we, you know. We have to work that out with Kent School, it's going to host it or going to provide the auditorium. The question really. Is for us, what kind of a crowd are we going to expect and. As soon as I get back to Kent, we're going to, you know, blanket the community with posters and. Notifications and Selectman's Newsletter and everything. We really would like to get a, a real cross section of Kent people. To come and find out about how much has totally changed in the way of renewable energy and what is available to every one of us now at. Bargained prices, really.
So. Are the other schools on fall break? Cause that's when Marblewood's on their fall break. Something I want to throw out there. I know the date's probably pretty locked in, but Marblewood is on fall break that day.
How many schools have fall breaks? How many schools have fall breaks?
It's like a, a long weekend, you know, usually around Columbus Day, there's a, a long.
Oh, Columbus Day weekend. Got it, got it, sorry.
I don't know that it is Columbus Day weekend though, but I did, that's, that's.
I just looked at their calendar. I, I just, you know.
We, we were not aware of that. I don't know.
Clearly it doesn't affect my student. I'm just putting it out there.
I'm, I'm looking right now, Wendy. Uh, no, Kent School doesn't have any break then.
Okay. And South Kent, I don't, I mean, it obviously if Kent had a break, it would be. Easier to schedule maybe, but.
Yeah, and there are going to be kids that aren't going to go home for the weekend, who, you know, come from far away. We just want to get a, a representation of.
Yep.
Yeah.
Has based on a, a presentation in the area before?
Has, say that again?
Has based on a presentation in.
They've done them, lots of them in the center and eastern part of Connecticut. It seemed to be much more interest in this there. They did one recently in West Hartford, which isn't quite comparable to Kent, but they have their, I think I included a link. To a brochure that they, or a booklet that they did for West Hartford. On. Opportunities and so on, but, but they are really trying to. Tailor make it to Kent. I mean, they have access to so much data about. How many houses in Kent have renewable energy? How many electric vehicles are in Kent right now? They. They, they tap into everything because these guys are nerds. They're retired actuarials from big insurance companies. And so they're able to, to go and zoom in on your rooftop and tell you how many square feet. Of potential solar panels you, you, you might be able to have. And it's kind of astonishing what they can do.
Well, they also had the Google Maps that showed. Public properties or parking lots that were suitable for solar panels. And they've done it for a bunch of towns or maybe for the whole state. And that was interesting too.
Yeah. And, and of course, the price of, of solar panels, which is always going to be the number one resource. These have come down. By, by half. Every ten years, they're half what they were the previous ten years. They're really getting so cheap. But so have other things like. Air, what do they call air? Heat, heat general.
Air pumps or heat pumps?
Heat, heat pumps, but air heat pumps, yeah, which you don't have to dig a, you know, twenty feet down into the earth. They. They grab warmth from even cold air. It's a very complicated system, but it, it apparently works very well now and even in climates like ours. So these will all be things we'll present. Not everybody's going to want to go out and immediately invest in these things, but I hope that we will. Open their minds to. Looking for solutions, however small or however large, that move us in the right direction.
Will there be a hybrid presentation of life and Zoom?
Uh, no, it'll be, it'll be, there'll be visuals, but the, the people will be here. Uh, Maria Horn presumably will be here and they will be here.
Bet you though, we can get it filmed so that people who weren't able to make it would be able to view it after the fact.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It'd really be good to get some people from other towns too, so it's a good audience, not just a small audience.
We would, we would very much like, and you know, as, as I say, come August first, I'm going to hope all of you will. You know, tell your friends and get, get, get this talking up and we'll be in touch with the newspapers and so on.
Great. It's exciting.
The, you may know this, the smaller auditorium at Kent School only holds about fifty people.
I know, I, you know, this was Jesse's suggestion was the smaller one. I said, I don't think that's going to work. That's why I'm holding out for the bigger one. Uh, but it, but it scares me that I don't want it to be, you know, sixty people in a two hundred seat auditorium. That would be embarrassing. So, uh. The other opportunity is that the technology building, but that doesn't really have a stage. We, I went to something there. I think it was on the Discovery of Lusitania or something or other. And it was, was not a very comfortable place. So, uh, yeah, I would like to have the big auditorium if possible.
I'll, I'll agitate for that, for whatever my input is worth.
Thank you. So that's, and Miranda, if you have any questions, I, I mean, we, we want to provide you with as much grist for your collection of. Sustainable Connecticut.
I think there's going to be a lot of, of stuff we can use from, from your program for a couple of items for Sustainable CT, so. Um, we'll probably, I mean, I'm, I'll be in touch with you at some point regarding some, some of that, but. Um, yeah, no, I think it's, it sounds like a great program and I think it's going to check some of those boxes and. And just be very valuable to the community as well, so.
By the way, I'm desperately searching for a good name for this program, something catchy. So if anybody comes up with a. Uh, you know, Energy Today or whatever it would be, that, that would catch attention, I would greatly appreciate it. We'll give you an extra lollipop. When it's over. So, that's my message.
Great. I really think this is terrific, Wendy. Thank you for all the work that you've put into this. It, it sounds like it's going to be a pretty exciting program, so.
I hope so.
Mark your calendars, October fifteenth. Um, okay, any further questions? Ready to move on in the agenda? Good. Okay, so. The, I, the ordinance enabling Kent to purchase open space in other land, I don't think that there is an update or anything new to discuss there this month. Okay, good, so let's, let's table it, move on. Recommendations for the commission homepage. I left on the agenda until we decided to take it off the agenda. I did look.
Darlene, Darlene worked on it a lot today. She has one or two more days to finish up, but she gave me a whole bunch of. Feedback on what she can and cannot do and hold on, I was just going to look for that email.
She's been very supportive. I thought we might get pushback, but she, no, she seemed to be glad to do it.
Yeah, she, um. Tomorrow she'll add the, um. Tomorrow she'll add the terms on. Um, and some of the things that were on your list, Wendy, she, they were already there. Maybe just not where you were exactly looking.
Yeah, probably not.
Um. So terms are adding tomorrow. She asked me who the vice chair, treasurer and secretary were. I said we had Carol, Liddy, but we don't have a secretary. Um. The paragraph, you, you said, give the dates and times of regular monthly meetings. She said that is actually on there. And then she said, the trail maps, maps are listed, but no text. Unless we were to add a whole bunch more of the pages of text that you, Wendy, have written. Which is just going to be more PDFs. She didn't really have any way of doing.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't know.
And then. Indicate that the public is invited and how to attend Zoom meetings. It's noted on the hub, on the homepage that public is invited. But we haven't, as a town, developed how to. Say state, how we are inviting people to Zoom meetings and such. Um, so, so that's like a town discussion, but probably will get. Resolved once the main meeting room is hybrid. Um. She said that any of our events can go on the town calendar, but that adding it to the page one by one wouldn't. Be something she'd be able to do just because it would be high maintenance, but it can go on the town calendar. All we have to do is send her an email to do just that. And she added the links to HVA, KLT and. NWCR. I guess I should also have her add NCLC, so.
Maybe she, that's what she meant. What is?
That Northwest Conservation Region though, maybe is which, I don't know what NWCR really is, but.
Or Jurassic Conservation District?
We can look.
And are though, yo, so it doesn't, it doesn't quite work. She might have meant NCLC.
Let's. Let's look and see if there's anything missing, but that, that's great. And so I would ask all of you to take a look at the homepage. Maybe midweek next week or something to give her a chance to finish what she's been doing and, and then.
Send it through me. I can put them all together and send them all to her at once as opposed to sending her a billion emails to.
One, one thing that, that I commented on at the time was, I think we ought to be. More careful about removing stuff that's really old, because that made us look very dated.
That was your last comment here and we have removed quite a bit of the stuff. We thought that the stuff that was left was kind of important stuff.
It, it wasn't just our page, it was other, other commissions, you know, things just for letting.
Yeah. And I think that's what, I think she took that comment. And, and that's why the comment about adding things to the calendar makes a whole lot of sense so that things don't get left over. Um. Since it's only her doing the edits.
Yeah. No, I'm sure anything that's done is going to be an improvement.
Great. Well, I will leave it on one more time and when we're satisfied, we can take it off the agenda. Let's move into the next item, which is Sustainable Materials Management in Kent. I, I don't have anything new that I've heard from Gene about the Grant for Organics. I don't know, Miranda, if you have any insight on that or if anyone's heard anything new.
Um, I do not. We did not. That was not something we talked about at our meeting today, so I don't have any.
All right.
And she, she'll put it into the Selectman's Meeting, I think, before she, when she gets the grant.
Okay, well, so we will table that and hope that they, you know, that they start to move more quickly on getting that going. Um, next item on the agenda is Kent Trails, a hiker's guide. I hope you saw Liddy's email earlier today. Liddy, do you want to give a, a, a broad update first or?
Well, the first thing is to say, sometimes it's hard to get the artist to get going on the maps. So, but I think, I think we're, we're making progress. We, we know what we have to do. Uh, there are two maps that we don't have information on and so John has sent out an email. Asking for clarification on those two. Otherwise, uh, the email I sent around about the logo, the NCLC logo is a long skinny thing. And it doesn't fit where he had the We Have Another one. So his question is, can he switch it to what he did, which is just a. Their, their little picture and then the, the title underneath it in four lines.
Liddy, couldn't we do it without the, without the text? Just the logo is very handsome.
So it is, but Wendy, the, the name of the organization is so long.
But also, I'm gonna, um, like. Unfortunately, we had this in discussion when we made the cards. When we gave the Kent Trails books out to new residents and made a little card that said welcome and it had. The Conservation Commission, the Land Trust and NCLC's logos on it and I had the same. Reaction and difficulty and I did a little manipulation and they said, no, no way, the logo is what it is. So. That was maybe two years ago.
I had the same conversation with a hike that we did jointly. They're, they're pretty into their logo.
Well, you know, I, some organizations create different versions of their logo, you know, for exactly that reason. They may have, they, they call one a banner. That they can use atop a piece of stationery. They have one that's more boxy. I, they did not and, and they really are, I, you know, quite serious about only using that, that. You know, that image exactly, but we can still ask. I, I just think.
Melissa, when was your discussion with them about the logo? How long ago?
I want to say that it was. It was probably at the beginning bef, right at the beginning of COVID, right Connie? Where, because we didn't end up having the, the hike that we jointly did with them.
So maybe I suggest something. How about just showing a mockup of the two choices? One with the tiny, tiny type. That's their problem and the other with John's solution and say, you know, either one, we don't care. We don't have to worry about it.
It's just, it's just that to put the long one on the map, I just, I'm not even sure.
But it, you know, but, but the, the image, the graphic image will still show and if you can't read it, tough luck.
That's the way to go. I really do. I think we have to ask them. I mean, we have no idea.
Tell me. Can you give me a name and a phone number or an email or whatever?
I would send it directly to Catherine Rossin and she's Catherine at ctland.org.
I can send you that. I can send you that link.
Please, please, please. Good.
I think she'll get back to you quickly. I, I don't.
That would be nice, because.
But show, show it both ways.
I will, Wendy, I think that's a good suggestion, but I'll, you know, it'll be miniscule in order to fit on the map, but that's okay.
Yeah, that's not our issue.
They may not care, maybe if it's miniscule, as long as people recognize that it's.
I mean, because it says it in the text anyway, so.
Right, right, or will.
Yeah, right.
Sorry about that. As I was going through all of my records on it. Way back where, I don't know, somewhere in twenty-one, I think, twenty-twenty-one. Somebody, and I thought it might have been you Connie, but now I can't find the email, said something about. A new access trail for the KLT farm.
Well, okay, so I think what you're remembering is not all that long ago. That, that KLT was awarded a grant to make that Claire Murphy Trail. Or a portion of it into an all-access trail, so basically it will be the same footprint of the trail. But it will have. You know, powdered stone at the beginning, so that someone can, you know, roll a wheelchair if they needed. And then as it gets wet, it will move into a boardwalk, so.
Verbage that should be on the map, when will it happen, et cetera?
Well, I would hold off, and I know that this is, you know, this is the last time, so I don't want to. But we do have to pull permits to do that, and there'll be some construction involved. And we know that we can't even begin that until after Megan's season, because we want the parking lots to be available for her. So, you know, best case scenario, it won't take place until this fall. As the ground starts to harden up and. Yeah, I, I would just say, hold off on it for now, because we're just gonna create confusion. Like the, the famous Kent Valley Park that is cited in the sustainability report. You know, if we talk about a trail that's not there, yeah.
Well, and that report does actually mention the all-access trail, which is probably one of the things you were thinking about, Liddy. That, that report does mention that it's already there, which it's not.
Oh, okay. The other thing was, the Warren Land Trust's access trails. That apparently are going to connect with the East Kent Hamlet Preserve.
That's true, so, and Mike knows about this well. Where East Kent Hamlet Nature Preserves Red Trail flows off the boundary of that preserve. It will continue on into a new preserve that the Warren Land Trust is, will own. Hopefully within the year.
But again, we, we can't say anything about it.
Well, I, there's just nothing yet, you know, I mean, they will be joined, and it'll be one big preserve. Offering a lot of opportunities, but I would expect that, you know, there will be new trails developed in there. As a consequence, and some loops, and you just, you know, if we wait for those, we'll never do this.
Yeah, we'll, we'll write something ambiguous in here, but we gotta, since we're calling this the last iteration. We'll have to put something in there that looks ahead or whatever.
I mean, there is, there already is a new trail. There already are new trails that probably aren't on John's maps. And we may not have sent the footprint to in East Kent, Kent Hamlet Nature Preserve. So Clark did one that I, you know, that loops. I, you know, threw a part of the preserve that previously didn't have a trail, and Clark also cut a small. Spur trail to a high point where there's a view of Lake Warhamog, which is really nice. And so it may be that I want to get you a, like a shape file for that, so we can get those on.
If you could do it not as a shape file, but as a PDF, that would be much appreciated.
Yeah, I mean, what, so the.
I don't have software to read a shape file.
I would need to take the shape file and then basically what John did, which is, you know, guesstimate and draw. You know, you can, you can PDF a map, you know, but he would still, he would need to approximate it. And, and that has always been fine.
I feel like Clark did do that, though. I feel like Clark sent that one over, because I gave you all a list of how many, of what trails needed. And I'm pretty sure that was in there.
The new one even?
I'm pretty, pretty sure.
We will double check. And we'll try hard not to create too many new trails between now and the publication.
You know, we, I needed, John needed more information on the Tobin Preserve. And then Skiff Mountain, there's another seventy acres that's been added to it.
There has no trail in there yet.
Yeah, but to show the seventy acres, and I think Clark said that he was gonna send a screenshot of it. And somehow or another, that didn't come.
Okay. Okay.
Liddy, could you keep an informal list of where I need to rewrite text? Where, where John has made a change, just let me know which maps I have to go back over.
I don't suppose you have a book with you, Wendy?
I thought about it, but then I didn't write.
Good, good.
It's gonna be August first.
Very good.
Okay.
Liddy, you had a question with Tobin, though? Or you are good with?
No, we're not good with Tobin, that, that. Map didn't come through. Avian, many, many versions of Avian came through, but nothing on Tobin. So John sent a request for the Tobin one and the seventy acres in Skiff Mountain. We haven't heard back yet.
Okay, you can always copy either of us as well, and we'll help to hunt down that information.
Okay, yep. No, I think John did not copy you on that.
Okay, anything else on the book?
Uh, no, we still, we continue to sell it.
You might mention that we have a new introduction.
Wendy came up with a wonderful thing, which we will figure out where to put it.
Okay, at the farmer's market this week, we're gonna be actively discussing and selling the book. And in the email that goes out, we'll mention the book, so, you know, if anyone wants.
Don't tell them that there's another one coming.
No, we're not going to, but if you want to stop by the farmer's market and, and, you know, give a little bit of a talk up to customers, that would always be great.
Maybe.
Yeah, Wendy's not coming just for that, I get it.
And I think, I think we're gonna be saving. So that's it.
Did you have enough time to take your notes, Connie?
Well, I'm taking, I'm just finishing up one now. All right, so let's move on. I, to, you know, almost the last thing on the agenda. Which is Sustainable CT and a Sustainability Report. And I need a new pen, because I might be running out of. So, Miranda, is there an update from the Sustainability Team?
Um, we're kind of still working, working through some stuff. I, I was able to get in touch with Stacy. Demming, Stacy Demming? And I got a map and some. Spreadsheet from her that I input into Sustainable CT website. You know, it, it sounds like they don't review the stuff until the deadline approaches, so. But I'm assuming we'll get some points for that, it was the open space plan. And then I, I imagine.
Can you back up for one second? Stacy Demming made an open space plan, or she just?
No, it was something that already existed.
Listing open space.
Yeah. Yes. So I don't think she made it, it was just something that. She had already had.
Okay.
Because the one that I had seen was from like two thousand nine or something.
Yeah.
And then there's also a spreadsheet that listed, you know, all the information. With the properties on, on that, so.
On that is really current, so.
Yeah, yeah. So, that has been. Added to Sustainable CT. There's a couple other. In the. Action item three, that we could probably get some points for. That I will take a look at, and then also the, you know, the energy program that Wendy's putting together. I foresee there being. You know, some, some points for that as well, so. Yeah, that's kind of the, the report on my end. For that, we'll keep working through, and there's just a lot, a lot of information that. You know, is out there and that has already been done, it's just kind of going through all that and figuring out where we can. Post some stuff.
Do I understand that you might have a new position on that committee?
I, yes, Leanna had to step down, and so I am the chairman now.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
I knew you wouldn't say it yourself, so I wanted to make sure it got out there.
Yeah, so. I think that's, that's pretty much it for now, I will. I'll touch base with Wendy on if I need any supporting. Documents as, as she gets further along to submit for, for those points for that program. But I, I think it'll be a really great thing to put into Sustainable CT, so I'm excited about that. And just for the program in general, too, sounds cool.
Good. Should we, last time, last time that we met, we talked briefly about the summary of findings. From the Community Resilience Building Workshop that was held in March of twenty-twenty-two. And. The suggestion was that we take additional time to, to read it and discuss. I don't know if you all have had a chance to do that. I guess I'm opening up for discussion about that summary of findings.
I read it, I don't know if other people read it. I think there's a lot of. There needs to be quite a bit of. Fact checking. Before it gets included in the POCD, or. Maybe it won't get included in the POCD, because I, I, there's not, there's a lot of inaccuracies in it.
Who produces?
The one you went to that meeting for.
Now, how were all these things listed? Was that by people who attended that meeting? Or was it by the people from Sustainable CT who are doing the support work?
It was just a report.
All the items that are listed on these pages.
Did the consultants put it together? The POCD consultants?
The Sustainable Connecticut Consultants, I suppose.
The Nature Conservancy, that's a workshop, and I, I. Don't know for sure, but I believe that the Nature Conservancy has been running these workshops as. You know, for towns as part of the sustainability, sorry, Sustainable Connecticut Program. So, running these kinds of workshops to help towns qualify. You know, for certain measures in Sustainable CT. But it's, it's, it really is quite unclear. How many people were there and where the bulk of the information in the report comes from.
Doesn't sound very useful.
I mean, I, I would, my preference would be not to go through it until people have really had a chance to review. Or if people haven't had a chance to review and don't think that they will, I, I'm not really sure where to go with it. I don't know, Miranda, do you know if this is proposed to be included in the POCD? Or is it just kind of a document that exists on the side? You know, I had it on the agenda as the Sustainability Report, but I don't know that that's even really accurate. It's called the Community Resilience Building Workshop Summary of Findings, so it may be.
Can you send us a link to it?
I did in the chat, and I emailed it to you as soon as it was released. Back before our last meeting.
Oh, I'll have to go find it.
It's in the chat also.
On the chat, and it'll open in your window.
You know, we have not talked about it being included in the POCD, but.
We haven't talked about that today.
Did we?
Yeah. And that's what she talked about at the POCD meeting with PNZ.
Oh, Joanne, yeah. Yeah, so, I don't know that much. I mean, I went, I went to the, the meeting. But it was kind of at the beginning. Beginning of my involvement in that group, so. The, the planning process for it had started before I was. heavily involved, but. Yeah, I mean, I guess if, I can touch base with Joanne and see. What we think, but, I mean, if we don't think we should include it, then we don't include it.
I would just say that, you know, the, I think that the risk is that. Is the information, if the information indeed does come from the people that attended the workshop. You know, a very small portion of people. So it doesn't really represent, you know, a consensus or even, you know, a good picture of the knowledge. That is within our town about the subjects that are contained in the report. I also think that most of what's in here is covered in the POCD. And so, you know, to me, the real risk is, is detracting from the import of the POCD by, by duplicating. But not exactly information that's already in there.
I, I would just link to it in the POCD, just provide a link.
But if it's not accurate, it shouldn't be linked to.
I mean, maybe, it really depends on its characterization, because if the POCD provides a link to it. And says there was this workshop, which, you know. I mean, the workshop was probably a good thing, it's too bad that more people weren't able to attend. Because of the scheduling of it, which, if I recall, you know, it was very short notice. And it was on a Wednesday during a working day, so anyone with a job. That required them to, to be on duty, wouldn't have been able to, to attend that. That was my problem, I, I had another meeting scheduled for that day. But, you know, if, if all it is, or all it purports to be is a report about a workshop, then I don't really see any harm. Even if there are inaccuracies, but if it's presented as, you know, something conclusive. About environmental and sustainability concerns in the town of Kent. I would prefer that people read what's in the POCD, which has been more widely vetted.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with that, and I, I don't, you know, apparently I glossed over the conversation. This afternoon, but I wouldn't envision putting the whole report in the POCD, I mean, I just. I mean, I don't think that's necessary, and. You know. I just don't think it's necessary, but, I mean, whether we provide a link. No, I think there is some useful information in the report, whether there are some inaccuracies.
If you provide a link, you're endorsing it in effect.
No, not really. It's, it's not an official town-approved report. But it is a useful, useful report that gives some more. Details. I mean, the POCD is more general, and this gives more specific things. But it's, it's not fetted as well, so, and a lot of it is double.
It's not factual, it is a report of a discussion, so it's, it's almost like meeting minutes or notes. You know, somebody, the inaccuracies came from somewhere, right? You know, they, the TNC, I'm sure didn't just make it up out of thin air. But somebody said something that led to, you know, this is just one example. Led to the belief that there is a place in Kent called Kent Valley Park that has a, you know, remarkable boat launch. And is maintained by the Kent Land Trust. And, you know, we all, when we read the report, went, you know, where, where is that? You know, because I'd like to go there, you know, part of the problem with the town of Kent is that there isn't river access. And so to, you know, to hold out. uh, you know, to hold out this impression for, you know, the unschooled that somewhere there is this amazing river access with a boat launch is, I mean, that's, you know, that's what we need, not what we have. Uh, so, to the extent that the report is, uh, presented as this is a compilation of notes from the workshop, I think it's fine because you take it or leave it, um, but it, it really shouldn't be construed to be factual.
I think it's unwise to include it, and it's particularly with that example, I mean, you're gonna get a million phone calls about that.
You might have to make it. But you shouldn't put it on the map until it exists, right?
Definitely not.
I, I mean, it, you know, maybe we leave it on the agenda, let the rest of you read it. Uh, I don't know if it's helpful to nitpick each and every inaccuracy or, you know, do a a full read, but, uh, maybe a- after some further discussion, you know, we should put our thoughts in writing. Uh, it just that, you know, that, that it really, I, it shouldn't be included as part of the P O C D. Um, if it were to give the impression that it were, um, you know, a set of facts that was fully vetted, um, and not the, you know, not, not a documentation of a discussion.
Connie, where is, what is the situation now? Does P O C D think, do they want to include it at this point or are they not even gone there? Wh- where?
They have not talked about it yet. Lyddie, they just heard that, they heard everyone at that meeting, they heard everyone's suggestions and they said, we will look into it and we will talk about it as a P O C D subcommittee. So, before the hearing, we should get another version of the P O C D for everyone to review and then we'll have a public hearing on it.
Right, but Melissa, to your knowledge, does the P N Z P O C D Subcommittee know that this document is hanging out there? Uh, waiting for possible inclusion?
Joanne made that clear in the meeting, yes.
Okay.
Before we conclude, I want to show you a picture of our one solar panel that runs this whole island. It's pretty tiny.
I want to see it.
Okay, but do we, wait, 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 stop.
Might take her a little bit to walk there, I don't know how close it is.
Um.
No, it's right out of my window.
The, so, does that sound like the plan that we leave it on the agenda? The P O C D is not gonna be, uh, adopted before our September meeting, uh, but we are gonna have to, you know, make, uh, you know, make an effort to, to relook through this and see, you know, what type of letter we might want to put together. To, I don't know, either the P O, the P N Z P O C D Subcommittee or to the Sustainability Team or both. Uh, just with our suggestion about how to characterize, um, uh, this summary of findings.
I mean, I don't, I know, I don't want to over simplify things, I don't know if you need to put together a letter, I mean, I can certainly circle back with the group and talk about your, your concerns and I don't, you know, if we don't think it should be included, then it won't be, I, I mean, but ob- obviously I need to have that discussion with Sustainability Team, but, um. Yeah, I mean, you, you can write the letter if that's what you feel is the best, but I've, I can, I can communicate with the team.
Yeah, I don't think we're ready to write a letter as of tonight because I would like for more, uh, people on this call to have read through the report. Um, so that we can actually discuss that. Um, so, I, you know, all of these, I, all of these ideas are just possibilities. Um, you know, I just, I want to make sure that we're mindful of the timing, uh, because we don't meet in August, we will meet in September. I think that still gives us plenty of time before the P O C D is, um, adopted, but we are gonna need to discuss it at the next meeting.
When is the P O C D hearing? I thought the hearing of the P O C D was happening like in August or the beginning of September. I'm confused.
Yeah.
Do you know?
That's what I mentioned at the meeting.
Yeah, I, I thought that was like coming right up and they were gonna have one more meeting and then it was gonna be a schedule of hearing and it had to be like warned and whatnot.
But I also don't know if, if it's worthwhile to present this in detail. I mean, I read, I read through it, but I didn't read it in detail, I didn't make any notes. There's way too much in there. Um, and I, I don't think it's up to us to correct this or anything. Um, I think we should just leave it the way it is and make pick out some things that we find important. They're good statements, but that's it.
I agree, Yose.
Well, I think you guys all have to read it to, to make that statement. The meat of it is sixteen pages, it's not that long.
I mean, I just, I just again think that it really all depends on how it's characterized. You know, as, uh, as a report of a workshop, it doesn't bother me because you know, somebody who had no idea and I'm, I'm talking about the consultant from T N C, who, you know, probably had no idea of the town of Kent was leading a workshop and taking notes and then to compile the information, so. I, I mean, that person was bound to, uh, emerge with, you know, a a picture that wouldn't be the same as if one of us that had a lot of familiarity with Kent and had read our P O C D and our P O C D draft already, uh, you know, would have come up with, I mean, it's just, you. So, I, it, it's a little unfortunate, I don't think it's particularly useful. Um, but if it, if it's only characterized as this is the report that came out of a workshop and then, you know, there's really nothing, there's not, it's not worth, you know, it'd probably take more time than the aggregate time of the people who attended to get it right. So, I don't know what you guys want to do, you want to wait and see until we find out more about when the P O C D, uh, draft will be released, see if it's in there, see if we want to say something about it then. Um, I don't know what you want to do.
Why don't you leave it on the agenda and we'll see what the timing is for the P O C D and we'll discuss it in September if necessary.
Okay.
Sounds good.
All right. Uh, it would be an extremely rare occasion for us to get done with our meeting in under an hour, uh, and we haven't, because it's eight o'clock, uh, but we're very close. Uh, we don't have any new business. Um, we do have an item of correspondence, I, uh, sent you, uh, along from Jean who thought of us. Uh, the notice, Deep's notice of their request for information uh, about, um, designing and implementing an e-bike incentive program. Um, I think from, you know, it's most likely that, uh, we won't have all that much to say in terms of the request for information, but it's an interesting topic and so in addition to that R F I, uh, there's a public listening session on Thursday, July twenty-first. Uh, and if anyone, uh, feels, uh, a deep interest in the topic of, of e-bikes, um, I welcome you to attend that.
I had to look up what an E J.
Policy with the land trust for that trail used by e-bikes?
We don't allow bikes on our trails.
No motorized vehicles either.
But also no bike.
Yeah, but, because some land trusts say it's motorized vehicles, others say, no, it's bicycle and we allow bicycle.
We don't allow bicycles, though, so we don't allow motorized vehicles or bicycles.
Yeah.
And I think this is really, Yose, more in the context of, um, transportation. Uh, you know, there are, I'm sure you've seen them, cities where, um, you know, people are biking around more often than they're using cars, um, our village center could accommodate, uh, e-bikes, we have stores.
We have a store that is selling e-bikes and renting e-bikes, so my question is, I guess, um, shall we send this on to the owners of that store just in case they're unaware? I, I feel like that would be, you know, it probably, they know about it. But if they don't, they would be the ones that would probably lead the.
Yeah, do you know them, Melissa?
I don't know them, no.
Okay, maybe we can find out from the chamber.
I mean, they, they have.
E-bikes fit into the whole sustainable renewable energy. I mean, like electric vehicles, we're in favor of them, I think.
Oh, of course.
Yeah.
They have a presence on social media, so I would hear there's a contact us button. That's their website.
Great, well, let's do, let's send it on to them. I think that would be the good thing to do. Um, Melissa, do you want to, could you do that? Are you able to do that?
Sure.
Great.
Would you want to involve the chamber when you forward it to them? I wonder, are they members of the chamber?
They have a store in Kent and in Cornwall, I think we should just send Connie's email on to them and see where it goes, I.
Yeah, I mean, if you read the, the R F I, uh, what the state of Connecticut is looking to do clearly is to benefit disadvantaged communities. Um, so, it's unlikely that this, you know, that, that the town of Kent factors hugely in it, but I think that our store owners, uh, would probably appreciate knowing that this is going on.
Do you all know what an E J community is?
Environmental justice.
Well, I had to look it up, I had no idea what it was.
Yeah, it's a, it's a community with a population that has been systematically disadvantaged, um, in an environmental way over the years.
There are about nine items, any one of which could make a town be labeled an E J community.
I think the only one around here, well, there, there's a couple, but I think Torrington qualifies and there's like a small section of one of our other Northwest Connecticut.
Winstead, probably.
Um, but those are, oh, yeah, Winstead. On the Litchfield Hills Green Print Collaborative web map where you can turn on, off all of the layers, Stacy Demming has added, um, you know, those communities, uh, to the map so that you can, um, check that to see, uh, you know, to see if that applies.
No, I just, I was, just thought it was interesting.
Yeah. Yeah, if there are a lot of different acronyms that are making their way into the vernacular.
I thought it was misprint the first time.
Um, okay, so I think really that that, um, is it, and so, you know, I appreciate uh, your attendance on, on a summer evening. I, you know, no, no need to prolong if we don't have to. Um, I will entertain a motion to adjourn and then we can get a look at Wendy's solar panel.
So.
I did, I showed it.
I missed it.
I missed it, too.
You gotta do it again.
I thought you were showing the dog, I saw the dog's butt.
No, 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 we're.
I'm seconding, we're adjourning to eight oh six, I'm stopping.